I'm sending my son in, he's gonna go two days a week and then three days at home. His friend wants to stay five days at home, play video games.
Good to go Kelly.
Okay, yeah, everyone, welcome to our caucus before our meeting Monday, August 17th from the caucus. For the record, Council President Ellis, majority leader. Farrell was.
Yeah, she just dropped out.
She just dropped, okay. We have council members Love, Holy, Balleran, Johnson, Conti, O'Brien. The clerk of the council, Danielle Gillespie, I see the legislative, Michelle Andre. Research council chief, our, the charter. Did I get, I did get Mr. Conti. We're also joined by Corporation Council, Amy Levine. Did I forget anyone? I forget you Brett, I mentioned you, didn't I? Corporation Council, Brett Williams is also. Okay. Alright, going through the agenda. Under approval of meeting minutes from previous meeting, the August 3rd meeting minutes will be offered for passage. Okay. On to consideration of local law, local law K by Ms. Farrell. Will be going to finance, it's been intro on. Preferred finance. Next, onto local law L of 2020 by Ms. Love. I'm sorry, going back to, to, to Ms. Farrell's, it's local law amending pertaining to billing of the fee for curbside collection arrests. That was local law K. Back to local law L 2020 by Ms. Love, it's. Local law in regard to residence requirements for common council members. I know the last time, Ms. Love, you weren't here, but Mr. Conti brought up a point that. It had to go out to referendum and that it couldn't be done in less than 60 days, so just so you know.
I'm very well aware of that, I'm aware.
Okay, okay, so.
For next year, this is for next year.
Okay, alright, so that'll be an intro and then it's going to council operations. Okay, next. Under consideration ordinances by Mr. Robinson, ordinance 168220. Authorizing the sale of 109 Third Street, which is a vacant lot to William Chapman. And that will be going to the finance committee. Of the referral. Okay. Okay, next, on to consideration of resolutions by Mr. Robinson. Also, it'll be resolution 748220R. Will be a reappointment of Natasha Alexander as a member of the Commission on Human Rights. We did this back in March, April, I believe she was appointed on at our April 20th meeting. So we'd like to forego calling her back in since it was so recent that, that she appeared. Before us, so that, that's gonna be a pass. Okay. Okay, next, to resolution by me, 758220R. And it's again a resolution, the council adopting the records retention schedule. That will be a pass. I know from our last meeting, Mr. Shea asked for some, some information and our clerk Danielle Gillespie forwarded that information along to her regarding. The retention schedules. Okay.
Can I, can I jump in there?
Sure can.
So the question I've asked is. Or the, you know, my reviewing it, I was noticing that there are some retention times in the schedule that are. Smaller retention times than what we require in our code. So I had suggested that it be amended to reflect. That we're adopting that schedule unless something in our code requires a longer period of time. I'm not asking for it to be a shorter period of time, my understanding is we can require something to be a longer period of time. And JR told me that Corporation Council said that we cannot amend it. Now, it's a model resolution, if you look at the materials that Danielle sent, it's a model resolution, so a model resolution. Any model legislation is usually always subject to change by the enacting authority. We have, you know, various. Federal models, state models of, you know, forms and whatever, and they are always subject to modification. So I'm wondering if we got clarification from Corporation Council, why we cannot keep the provisions in our code. Regarding the longer periods of retention and are we now preempting our local code? Why are we, why are we not making this adjustment?
Mr. Pichardo, you wanna weigh in on Mr. Williams? I'm fine with, you know, making, adjusting it to a longer retention period than, than the state does and. But I have no objection to that.
I guess my concern with that, if you look at the Art and Cultural Affairs Law, section 7225, which is regarding records retention and disposition of records. That law talks about promulgating these retention schedules, so you know, now we have the new LGS1, Local Government Schedule 1, which replaces a variety of older schedules. And the Art and Cultural Affairs Law says that such schedules shall be reviewed and adopted by formal resolution of the governing body, the local government, prior to the disposition of any records. So, you know, the way I read that indicates that. The schedule really should be adopted as is. So that's, I think, where, where we're coming from. On that point.
So did you, as a result of my inquiry, reach out to? The folks regarding, at the state, regarding whether municipalities make this minor adjustment? Whether that's acceptable? In terms of their interpretation?
Didn't reach out specifically to the Department of Education, I guess I wasn't aware that's. I wasn't aware that's what your question was, I suppose. I, I was informed that you had a particular question about emails specifically, I think. And correct me if I'm wrong on that point, and. With regard to emails, those are, the retention schedule applicable to emails. Really has more to do with the content of email itself rather than the. Fact that it's just an email, you know, rather than the fact that it's an email. So it's the content that would govern when it's format, I suppose, and I think. I haven't heard back, but I think perhaps the clerk was reaching out to. Our own IT department on their particular practices with regard to emails.
Okay.
So I did have a question about emails and that doesn't completely answer it and I don't know that we need to resolve that particular issue. I think that, I think everybody in the city should be aware of the issue with regard to emails, especially those people who may not routinely use. The city email server for their business. But my, the reason why I asked you if you reached out to the state with regard to the, you know. When I spoke to, when, when I asked JR for what is the basis for us not being able to amend it? And essentially, if we can't amend it, then what we should be doing is going through our code and amending all of the provisions in our code that. Differ from this, including the retention of recordings, specifically the recordings of our meetings in particular. I know is at variance with what this schedule provides. So why wouldn't we then amend our code to require the shorter period of time, to be clear, since. We're saying essentially that, that the state provisions completely preempt our ability to do this, which I also disagree with in terms of preemption. Either the preemption is express. Or the, you're preempted to the extent that your provisions would not be inconsistent with. And, and municipalities and state and local governments, when there is some sort of preemption, there's generally, they can impose stricter requirements. With regard to any of the requirements in a particular law, so I don't understand this idea of us being preempted that we can't. Refer to our local codes provisions that require longer retention periods.
Yeah, I guess, I wasn't. Wasn't aware of the, I guess, the specifics that you were looking for in that regard, so. You know, I'm happy to look more into the issue if you like. I know the item is on for passage tonight and, you know, if. If our code is not preempted by. I guess my point is, we could still pass it tonight and then. Address the preemption issues later. Because if, if it does preempt our code, then we would have to go through and make changes to our code later, and if it doesn't preempt our code, then, you know, we still have our, our own provisions.
Except, except we're now, we're now adopting a resolution that's inconsistent with our code. So. Which is why I thought we should have a provision that allows for retention or requires a longer retention period when our code requires.
Mr. Williams, we can't, we can't understand you.
Sorry, sorry, I have some technical difficulties today. I'm calling up our resolution right now, does it specifically state that, that doesn't specifically state anything to do with preemption?
No.
No, but it adopts the retention schedule that is, that is referenced there, which is the state retention schedule, and that becomes our retention schedule.
Ms. Gillespie would like to weigh in.
So, I'm sorry, isn't that very similar to what we have with our notice requirements, like in the code, we have a more stricter notice requirement? We have seven days, but at minimum we have to do three, so I think that because our retention on specific items in the code is longer. We would go with the longer, very similar to how we do with regard to noticing meetings.
And I don't. If that's the case. Then I don't know why the resolution wouldn't say that, I think that we should be clear.
I think also there is the thing, if there's something in our code that's contradicting what the state law is, we have to go and change the code itself by ordinance or. Local law, I don't think the resolution would even be binding on that.
So we'll just, we'll intro it and hold for. Further discussion for Brett, for you to look into. Make any changes that Judy's requesting. Alright, and then we'll, we'll take it up at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, I skipped before after coming out of.
I didn't hear that final part of yours, what did you say?
Intro and hold, intro and hold.
Okay.
Pending the updates or changes. Back to, after local laws, we had consideration of vetoes, we're not, I just want to kind of update folks, we were. Mr. Holy's ordinance 158119, the mayor's veto was looming, and we've been working the last two weeks to kind of work through and get language that was satisfactory. That accomplished what Mr. Holy would like to accomplish, but in a different manner. Mr. Holy, would you like to speak at all on it, but we're not gonna be doing the override.
Yeah, that's correct, you know. It did pass hope to two the first time, but a lot of people called me or I called them and they felt uncomfortable moving forward with the override. I was hurt, I'll be honest with you, but that's politics, right? And if people got stuff out of it, I'm very happy for them, but I did get what I was looking for. With 12, in regards to 1211, and we got a good ordinance, I, I believe, that we can work on and it just, let's see how long it takes to get through. And, you know, that's my only concern is burden of hand sometimes with two in the bush, but. You know, we did, we spent hours and hours and, as you know, I was in the hospital last week, you know, the stress of this whole. The override and personal problems and work problems, it just overtook me and, you know. But anyhow, I appreciate everybody's support for the first go around. I think we're gonna be able to work more with the planning department, I hope so anyhow, and there's a lot of other things that we need to look at, so. That's pretty much what I have to say, if anybody wants to talk to me later, I'll be glad to talk to you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holy, for the record, I'd like to add that council members Igo, Goshay, Frederick, Lynn, and Robinson have joined us. So. Now we're on to. Resolutions introduced, did I go for that? No, I did. My last one, okay, on to resolutions held.
No, you skipped 74, Natasha Alexander.
Okay, alright, that's where I was at then, okay, alright, under resolutions. Introduced, that, that would be by, no, actually.
No.
I spo, I did, I did it.
Yes, 7482.
I did it, I said she'd been before us months ago and that we, we didn't need to, we didn't need to. Okay, so now in the resolutions held.
Kelly.
Yeah, uh huh.
Pass for tonight, introduction in the past, right?
Yep, that's correct, so it's a pass. Okay, where is my, actually. Okay, into the resolutions held, we have Mr. Anani's, it's number nine on the agenda, resolution 496120, he requested that. We, is he here? Oh, he just, you know. Mr. Anani. Mr. Anani? Can you hear me? Mr. Anani? Alright, so that'll be up for a vote.
Seems to be going in and out, he might have service issue. Cause he was there and he's not there, so I don't know.
I see him at the bottom of my screen looking.
Yeah, he was on mine, but he disappeared.
Mr. Anani, if you can hear me, wave your.
There he is, I could.
You probably can't.
Okay.
Mr. Anani?
Oh, yes, how you doing?
Okay, good, so we're on, on to resolutions held and we're on yours, number nine on the agenda, that resolution 496120. You asked for its passage, just for brief.
Yeah, yeah, oh definitely, you know, right now, we're in the middle of a pandemic and we are looking at. The uncertain circumstances that many of our residents are in, many of Americans are in, and one of the things that we could alleviate. The burden that so many people are facing, particularly individuals who have student loans. Is to recommend and encourage the federal government to act as it relates to canceling student loans and figuring out ways to help individuals who have student debt. You know, people are thinking about rent right now, people are thinking about property tax, people are thinking about childcare, so many things, and the last thing that people should be worrying about is their student loan, so. This resolution is essentially to send a message to the federal government to act and alleviate some of the burden, particularly as it relates to student loans.
Thank you, Mr. Anani, so we will be, we'll be offering that for. Vote if members are okay with that. Yeah, questions, comments, okay, alright, we'll bring it forward. Mr. O'Brien, you're, you're saying you, you're not getting sound, you can't talk, you can't.
No, I'm getting sound now, I saw.
Okay, yeah, okay, okay, yeah, next up is number 10 on the agenda under resolutions held. Mr. O'Brien's 627120R. You're, you're making some, you're supposed to make some changes.
Well, it says. The changes were made, oh, a week and a half or two weeks ago.
Okay.
By the planning committee and it's been circulated as amended, as of August 5th, it was amended. And in its amended version, the planning committee passed it out unanimously with a favorable recommendation. And, and it grows out of my concerns over a particular site, but it basically. You know, is our cautioning to the planning board to. To take a hard look at environmental issues, particularly if they're in sites identified as potential brownfield cleanup areas. And it also asks the planning director to propose language for the USDO, which should set up clear procedures in the USDO. For development in, in any parts of a potential brownfield cleanup areas that have already been identified, or such areas which may become identified. And that's, I'm moving it for passage, and it's got a unanimous approval out of the planning committee.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Brien, we'll be moving on. Next, Ms. Fahey informing that she wouldn't be here, she is out of town and doesn't have connectivity, so I will. Info, you know, intro her resolutions or. Announce her resolutions, it's item number 12, 13, and 14 on the list, on the agenda, resolution 697220R. Reappointment of Andre Lake to the Sustainability Advisory Committee, resolution 707220R. By planning also, reappointing Peter Sheehan as a member of sustainability, and lastly, number 14, resolution 717220. Are reappointing Tina Lieberman as a member of the Sustainability Committee. Those will be passes. Any. That's, I'm at the end of our agenda stuff, any other questions, comments? And where we're at up till now, Ms. Gillespie?
So we had a lot of comments that were submitted in connection to the mayor veto override 158119, how do you want to address those?
Well, I, I believe they should still be heard, I mean, we didn't.
Okay.
They submit comments, so we'll have to hear, hear what they say. Mr. Holy, is your hand raised now or is that from before?
Oh, it's raised now, I just had a fast question on with, with regard to what Mike's resolution. And I'm just trying to remember stuff because we did discuss it a little bit in committee, not as much. I'm concerned about city-owned property that's a brownfield, is that something that we as a council? Should try to deal with at some point, and, you know, Mike, did we discuss that during the meeting?
Yeah, well, what happened was the city back in 2006 commissioned, got DEC money to commission a study of the city-owned land. And that study showed that the city-owned land had lead contaminants above, you know, allowable levels. Buried under 60B, which was the city-owned land, which is where the dog park is and wooded area. And that, that info, and that that lead had infiltrated into the privately-owned land that they want to develop now into apartments. And what it recommended was that in 2008, was that the city applied for a grant for cleaning that up. And then landscaping on top of it to make it look more like a park. For some reason, and I don't know why, that recommendation was shelved, never acted on. And I don't know whether the funds identified that we were supposed to apply for for that cleanup still exist or not. And, yeah, I mean, I guess it would make sense to get an answer as to what can be done about the city-owned, owned land. I was more concerned, while I'm concerned about both, but I became more concerned about the privately-owned land because there were imminent plans to develop that. But I guess it would be quite appropriate to ask, I believe it was DGS, I remember, because Bill Bruce was the one who spearheaded. Doing this study, and then, as I remember, by the time the study was finished, he was out as commissioner. So I guess it's worth asking DGS. Or whomever should be responsible to. Make an assessment and report back to us as to why the city never followed through with plans to clean up what's identified as 60B, the city-owned land.
Mike, is there any other property in the city that is considered a brownfield, you remember from those days?
No, I don't remember.
Okay, I mean, that's, it's just a concern, there's no money right now, we all know that, but in the future, it's something that we really should. You know, having our dogs running across polluted land is not the, the best, but, you know, we're in a financial crisis, so believe me, but it's something I want to keep in, you know, in, in the radar.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Ms. Farrell, would you, you have anything, or want to say anything or add anything?
I, I don't, but Mr. Balleran has his hand up as well.
Okay, Mr. Balleran?
I just wanted to give the council a brief update on the CCA, the Community Advocate Agreement, right now, that's still being looked at. It's currently in a bit of a holding pattern. Basically because of the fluctuation in the energy rates, so. That's still in a holding pattern until that stabilizes.
Alfredo, can I ask a question related to that? I was informed by, that, that at the last board meeting, they were advised they had no bids. You know, you know how they put out the whole new system for the council chamber and, and a portable system for our caucus room? I was advised from the planning board meeting that there were no bids came in whatsoever. So I guess, I wonder.
No bids for CCA, or is that for the equipment for?
That was for the equipment.
Okay, I'm, I.
Is that gonna be re, put out for more bids, or, I don't know, maybe, maybe Danielle has some insight as to. Why we didn't get bids at all?
I, I think that's a difference, yeah, Mike.
Yeah, that's a difference, the one I'm talking about, Mike, is the.
Oh, true, true, but I just wanted to make you aware of that, that, what you were talking about raised that issue in my mind.
No, no problem, there, there was a bid that went out and they, one bid came back, one bid did come back.
Oh.
It wasn't something that would have been favorable, and so right now, we're on a holding pattern until it's more favorable time and you have multiple bids. That will also create a new environment, and that's to do with the CCA. Now let Danielle answer the bit about the equipment for our.
Well, we did, I'm sorry, Councilor O'Brien, we did advertise in BitNet, and BitNet reaches throughout. We did advertise in BitNet, and BitNet reaches throughout the nation. So anyone who was interested in the project could have bid on it. My guess why people would have been reluctant is because we have specific items from specific manufacturers. And sometimes when they're looking at making modifications to your sound system, they may want to make their own suggestions. So maybe the bid, the way it was written was too specific. So Laura Golfo and I are going to have continued conversations about how to cast a wider net so that when we do rebid, we have more success going forward. And I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Seeing we have no other questions or comments, it is now seven o'clock. So we'll... No other questions are needed right now. We move into, from our caucus, to our Monday, August 17th, 2020 Albany Common Council meeting has officially began. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. If all the members can unmute themselves so that they're able to respond to their names, please. Anani.
That's it.
Ballerin.
Yeah.
Ponti.
Here.
Dushet.
Here.
Fahey. Farrell.
Here.
Flynn.
Here.
Frederick.
Here.
Hoey.
Here.
Igo.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kimbra.
Here.
Lo.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Robinson.
Present.
Fourteen members present, one absent.
Thank you. And now, well, it's an echo. Sorry. And now we'll move on to our Pledge Allegiance. And before we do that, I'd like to recognize Mr. Flynn's comments about a moment of silence. Mr. Flynn?
Yeah, I just want to do a moment of silence for those that were affected by the shootings today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. So we'll go put up the flag so we say our Pledge Allegiance. Adam Clerk, and then after that, we'll recognize a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now we'll move on to our public comment period section of the agenda. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. We've had several members submit public comments this evening or for tonight's meeting. First one is from Alana Klein of 29 Glenwood Street. Her comment reads as follows. "Mr. President and members of the council, I hope these comments find you safe and healthy. Just a heads up, I'm about to piss a few people off. Blue lives don't matter. Let that sink in. Blue lives don't matter because blue lives don't exist unless you're talking about Smurfs. To quote something I saw on social media a while back, Sonnet the Hedgehog is the only blue life that matters. A cop is not born a cop. A black person is born a black person. A cop can take off the uniform. A black person cannot take off their skin. A cop can walk away from the job. A black person has to deal with being black every day. Again, blue lives don't matter because blue lives don't exist, full stop. Black lives matter." And that comment was submitted from Alana Klein. We also have members of the general public that are joining us. Mary Ann Berman. It appears as though she was here for comment. I did see her earlier.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Hello, Ms. Berman. This is Common Council President Coria Ellis. Welcome to our public comment period. You have five minutes to speak upon the subject you wish to speak upon. At the four-minute mark, I will let you know that you have one minute remaining. So we will need you just to state your name and address for the record. And with that being said, you can proceed.
Yes, thank you for your welcome. My name is Mary Ann Berman. I live at 7 Fleetwood Avenue in Albany. I've lived here for 55 years. My belief is what happens in one part of our city could affect at some point the entire city. Thus, the reason for being here this evening. Two things I'd like to comment on. Tom Hoey's ordinance, I am asking the common council to override the mayor's veto on Tom Hoey's ordinance. In this way, the residents of Albany will be assured that major development projects meet safety requirements before ground is broken. Local, state, and federal regulations should and must be met. And 563 New Scotland Avenue, the restricted covenant. In December 2019, the common council overwhelmingly 11 to 2 voted to require the city to honor the restricted covenant concerning building heights to three stories and 3 and 1/2 and South Allen Street. I am asking the common council to direct the mayor to enforce this covenant. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, and I will continue to listen.
Thank you for that, Ms. Berman. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Paul Lamar has also joined us to provide comment.
Hi there. Actually, my written comments were all that I intended to put forward, but they echo what Ms. Berman has said by way of supporting Councilmember Hoey's request, as well as the second issue of the height of the building. So I'm concurring with Ms. Berman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lamar. Thank you so much, sir. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
We also have Pete Sheehan, who is with us for public comment.
My name is Pete Sheehan. I live at 32 Buckingham Drive. And first off, yes, I do support Tom Hoey's resolution. I don't think there should be waivers permitted when there are, you know, legitimate issues concerned with, you know, with developments. And so I fully support Tom's ordinance. The other thing I want to talk about briefly is the resolution, which I have spoken about before. I spoke about it with you two weeks ago. And this is, again, about the restrictive covenant for the parcels involved in the project known as 563 New Scotland Avenue. And the final, the chief clause in that briefly was, in an effort to address those concerns, the Commissioner of Planning and Development, Chris Spencer, recommended that FM Promontory Capital execute a restrictive covenant to address the concerns and objections that would allow the 20 parcels above to be rezoned and allow, only allow only 3 and 1/2 story buildings. And that's what this is all about. And so that resolution, as Mary Ann just pointed out, that resolution passed 11 to 2 back in the wintertime. And the thing that I want to highlight is, it's a resolution. And according to... A resolution is, you know, the first step, as you all know. But before a resolution actually reaches the common council and before it's actually voted on, you know, it has to pass certain standards and certain litmus test. And of course, the first one is that the common council person who's going to introduce it, if it's brought by citizens like ourselves, like we worked with, Judy Dushate, in this instance, kindly took this on with us. You know, that common council person has to do a gut check on it, make sure that the resolution is not frivolous, is not, you know, something that is just not appropriate. So this resolution passed the first test. Then, of course, the second litmus test is the common council as a body. And this, once again, this resolution passed that litmus test. As you all know, these resolutions get enough airtime beforehand so that, you know, so all of you members of the common council can kick the tires on it, if you will, and, you know, gauge if it's appropriate, if it's, you know, if it gets at an issue that's important to the residents of the city of Albany. And this one surely was because it passed by an 11 to 2 vote. So that's the second litmus test. Third litmus test, of course, is the executive and his or her council. And they have the... If they feel it's frivolous, they feel if it's not in the best interest of this residence of the city of Albany, then they can, the executive can, you know, can veto it, you know, plain and simple. And that's a pretty high bar. And that did not happen in this instance. So when we talk about home rule law, that is, you know, that is really the deciding factor here. And according to home rule law, Section 302 BV, I believe it is, I'm not an attorney, then if it is not, if it passes those litmus tests and it's not vetoed by the executive, then it is, quote, adopted, as the city clerk, of course, pointed out to me. And our attorneys, you know, said the same thing. So what we're asking for is the common council to simply do what's in the resolution and direct the mayor's office and the planning board and, you know, and the council's office too, obviously, to enforce this resolution. And my recommendation would be a simple letter from the council president, Coria Ellis, to the mayor's office, asking her that this be formally adopted and that the city uphold it and enforce the restrictive covenant.
You have one minute remaining, Ms. Sheehan.
Thank you. So I think, I don't think this, once again, I don't think this is a frivolous request. It's proven that it is, it's kind of past the various bars along the way. And so therefore, I think you should all approve, work on a letter, get it up to the mayor's office, so that this restrictive covenant can be enforced and that the buildings at 563 New Scotland be limited to a total of 3 and 1/2 stories, which, by the way, I've spent months talking to residents who definitely do not wish to have a five-story building at 563 New Scotland. And I had a number of signatures attached to our original petition, as I think you all know. And so I respectfully ask that you uphold this restriction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. And a clerk?
President Ellis, we all, we have a call coming in from 518-438-5204. I believe they want to share public comment as well.
Are they already on the 535204? Okay.
Yeah, here.
Yes, just, you have, just state your name for the record and address, and then you have five minutes to speak on any issue you choose. But once, I don't know if you ever joined us before, our rules is council members cannot address you or answer any of your questions at this time. We're here to listen. And we, if council members choose to address you later on, they will do so at a later time in the part of our agenda. So can you please state your name and your address for the record? And you can begin.
My name is Brendan Barash. I reside at 183 Holmesdale Avenue in Albany. We're guarding the project at 563 New Scotland Avenue.
Okay.
That's the busy section with a large hospital right across the street. Putting a five-story apartment complex building there, in my opinion, is a massive endeavor that, in my opinion, would not, does not warrant to be there. It would just cause more traffic jams and more of a headache. I live in the Buckingham neighborhood, and many of my neighbors who I talked to are not satisfied with putting a five-story building there. So I'm requesting that, if possible, that, you know, could be modified. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
We also have Aaron Corman joining us for public comment.
Mr. Corman, are you there?
Yes, I am. Hello.
Hello, Mr. Corman. You have five minutes to speak on any matter you wish to. At the four-minute mark, I will relay that you have one minute remaining. So just state your name and your address for the record, and you can begin.
All right, thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Aaron Corman. I live at 108 Winnie Street, and I also own a home at 53 Fleetwood Avenue, where my father resided until about a month and a half ago when he passed away. I don't feel as strongly as many of my neighbors do about the covenant restriction. I mean, I respect them, and I agree that density could potentially be an issue. But my main concern, and I've spoken publicly multiple times about this project, is that the development, especially if it's going to be as tall as five stories, or even if it's only going to be 3 and 1/2 stories, I would like it to see it be set back at least 10 or 15 feet from the sidewalk to provide for more public space, both for restaurants as well as even an extremely small pocket park. I know that's maybe asking more than the developer's willing to give, but we only have one opportunity to create a project like this. You know, they don't come along too often. We've already been battling over this parcel of land for a number of years. And we really need to do the right thing when it comes to designing this project. And I support a little bit more density, even though it's in my neighborhood. I would like to see this parcel developed. I mean, what's there right now is definitely underdeveloped and underutilized, and it's not good for the city. And we can do better. You know, we can provide housing for people who work in the hospital, and actually the hospitals and other businesses nearby. I think it could be, this project could serve as a catalyst for more development in the neighborhood. And while I don't want to see some of the single-family character go away in some of the neighborhoods, I think the change is good. And I just want to make sure that we design this property properly. And my primary concern is that, especially if it's going to be a tall building, that we set it back from the sidewalk a good 10 or 15 feet, just so that, you know, there are folks who are concerned about the so-called canyon that could be there. Obviously, St. Peter's is, it's nine stories tall, but it's also 30 or 40 or 50 feet back from New Scotland Avenue. So it's not right on the street either. And I think we can find a way to make this project work for hopefully everybody, because it's probably going to happen. And I'd like to see it developed in the best way possible. And that's really, really all I have to say. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can a clerk call the next speaker?
Laura Cohen has joined us.
Thank you. I submitted written comments, so I won't waste your time by repeating them. I just want to thank everyone for reading them. My comments were to reinforce and support Tom Hoey's proposal. Having been through the various illegalities that brought the elephtheria into existence, I am really appalled to think that additional illegalities might be bringing another project into existence just a few blocks away. So I really hope that the common council will stand strong and make sure that the existing restrictive covenant is the legal covenant in existence and that it is upheld and not superseded by some covenant that the developers have created for their own benefit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Should call the next speaker? You're muted.
Yes. We also have someone calling in from 518-482-6154. We also have someone calling in from 518-482-6154.
Can you hear me?
Now we can. Yes, sir. Can you just state your name?
Thank you very much. This, this is Vincent Reguso.
All right, there you go.
Thank you very much. I was going to talk on 563 New Scotland Avenue, but I think Pete Sheen said just about what anyone else would say. If I was to say anything, I would have say, it's time for the city to enforce this covenant. As, as far as Tom Hoey's ordinance, unfortunately, I don't believe it's going to make it. But I, I want, this is going to affect everyone on that council, all 15 members. If you have something going into your ward and Chris Spencer interprets it entirely different than you think it should be interpreted, you got it. You ain't going to beat Goliath. And so you keep that in mind. And so the people that were with Tom Hoey the first time around is no longer with Tom Hoey the second time around, you're going to eat a lot of grass when something happens in your neighborhood. So the other thing I want to talk about that's very upsetting, and I only heard one person today talk about it, is the crime that's happening in the city of Albany. We are up 275% and not, and I hear very little out of its council. If I was on that council, I want my mayor in front of me, I want my chief in front of me, and I want to know what the hell is happening. First, we didn't have enough policemen, so we get the sheriff's department, and then we get the state troopers. And even with those people there, we've got more crime than we can shake a stick at. We have our young people getting shot, stabbed. Though every day, there's something on the news that where something's happening in Albany, and there's no plan, there's nothing. It just continues to happen. I, I'm really totally disgusted. 79 years of age and lived all my life in the city of Albany, and I lived down the South End, where never, never, never did I ever think that I would see the city of Albany this bad, this bad. And there's not even a plan to stem this crime, nowhere. I hate people talk about the, the covenant, the 1211 Western Avenue, but now many people here don't hold anyone accountable for what's happening in your ward. With that being said, have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reguso.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
We also have Elizabeth Barbarian joining us live.
Are you still there, ma'am? Sound like I heard somebody hang up a phone.
Vincent Reguso was hanging up his phone. I guess we must have lost Elizabeth Barbarian. Those, those are the ones that are joining us live. We do have written comments as well. Would you like me to begin with those, Mr. President?
Please.
Katina Mavadnez of Albany writes and shares the following. My name is Katina Mavadnez, and I live at 59 Melrose Ave. I'm speaking to you once again in support of ordinance 158119. As I had mentioned on previous occasion, there needs to be legislative oversight of an unelected municipal body. This ordinance provides this necessary provision and restores the necessary system of checks and balances as required by law. In addition, the common council represents the citizens' needs, and the USDO has to be ultimately responsive to citizens' concerns. Unfortunately, as of late, the stakeholders' interests in the city have been sadly overlooked. Again, this ordinance furnishes the required correction to this continuing problem. Finally, in the planning process, unintended errors can occur. There has to be a way to catch these problems before they cause significant liability and safety issues. This ordinance gives that protection, which is important since these errors, if not caught, could cost the city dearly. Thank you. The next comment is from Juliet Turner of 522 Road. Remarks to be read into the record of the August 17, 2020, meeting of the common council. I thank the planning committee of the common council for voting in favor of councilman Tom Hoey's proposed amendments to USDO Section 375, which require that all local, state, and federal regulations have been complied with before building starts on a development project. The planning committee clearly appreciated the need for this change, and I urge the full council to override Mayor Sheen's veto of this amendment as the entity best suited to ensure that the terms of the USDO adapt to changing circumstances. I would also hope that the council acts to seek the mayor's enforcement of the restrictive covenant relating to the building heights in the area of 563 New Scotland Avenue. Stephen Burke of 11 Clarendon Road submitted a comment which reads as follows. Mr. Hoey's previously approved ordinance that would require the Albany Planning Board to comply with all local, state, and federal regulations and the conditions generated by the agencies and officials of those entities to be complied with prior to start of construction activities. The mayor's veto of the council's approval must be overridden by the council to enable addressed critical open issues and ensure fire and building code compliance, including fire and safety issues. The next comment is from Julie Ellison of 510 West Lawrence Street in Albany. Her comment reads as follows. I'm asking the common council to override the mayor's veto of councilmember Tom Hoey's resolution to enforce safety requirements before the ground is broken for developments, and I ask the council to follow through on its December vote and demand that the mayor enforce the covenant, limiting the heights of buildings in the development of 563 New Scotland. It is reprehensible that the existence of the covenant suggested by the planning board itself was then disregarded by the planning board in the subsequent project design for, excuse me, for 563 New Scotland Avenue.
And what I think we have is Miss Elizabeth, I think she's in the waiting room. Is that who was?
She's back.
Yes. Let me see if I can get her joining. What's her last name?
Barbarian.
Ms. Barbarian, is that you?
Her audio is still connected. She may not be able to respond yet. Ms. Barbarian?
I can, I can put the video on, I'm sorry.
No problem. You can just, you can speak. We don't need to have the video. We just need your name, address, and you have five minutes to speak on an issue you wish to speak on. At this time, council members cannot respond to you. They may choose to respond to you at a later part of the agenda, but please go right ahead.
Well, I submitted, well, my name is Elizabeth Barbarian, and I live at 25 Clarendon Road in Albany. I submitted written comments. Did you get them?
Yes, we did.
It said that you got them.
Yes, we did.
So I strongly, you know, my written comments indicate that I strongly support overriding vetoes, and I don't know if I need to say more than that.
No.
I think I outlined it pretty well in my written testimony. I wasn't sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. No problem.
Mr. President, I did pull up her comments really quickly, so would you like me to start with her bullets only?
Okay. Yep, please do.
Yeah, if I knew how to do it, if I honestly, if I knew how to do it on Zoom, I would, but I think it's better if you read them. Her comments read as follows. These are the comments from Ms. Barbarian. She's a 39-year resident of Albany. She's lived at 25 Clarendon Road in Eagle Hill since 2002. She strongly supports Tom Hoey's amendment to the USDO and strongly urges the common council to override the mayor's veto. She believes more than ever the USDO must be a living document that can be easily updated as time and circumstances change and when facts which support its revision are presented. We have become painfully aware of the extreme relevance and importance of this flexibility as we endure the pandemic and its unknown aftermath, which may have significant ramifications on citizens' lifestyle choices. For example, the planning board, supported by the city's leadership, believes that high-rise, high-density buildings are the answer to the future housing needs of the city, even before this pandemic, which will likely decrease the demand for dense living. Cory Ellis and I discussed how the need and demand for buildings of this type and quantity had not been substantiated by the planning board. As members of the common council, your role is to represent the best interests of the residents of the city. Therefore, you must have the ability to adjust the USDO swiftly to meet residents' needs. You have your finger on the pulse of the city and the needs and wants of the citizens of the city. Therefore, the ability to adjust the USDO should be yours and yours alone. The USDO was created in 2017 as the roadmap for development in the city of Albany. I have voted with great dismay that the non-elected city of Albany Planning Board, which is closely aligned with the mayor, currently has the ability to override the regulations and laws of the USDO. By voting to override the mayor's veto, you will be supporting the repeal of Section 375-5 E14II of the USDO. This nonsensical last-minute addition to the USDO defeats and threatens the ordinance's very purpose of being. It allows the non-elected and non-representative planning board to override the conditions of an ordinance created by a duly-elected body, the common council, on behalf of the citizens of the city at will. Repailing this section would prevent the planning board from overriding the provisions in the USDO. Secondly, by overturning the mayor's veto, you will be supporting the terms of Mr. Hoey's amendment, which ensure that the issuance of a building or demolition permit within the city of Albany be prohibited unless all relevant prior approvals or conditions imposed by a city, county, state, or federal agency or department have first been met. The requirement that all conditions set by staff of these agencies, who are experts in their respective fields, must be met before a building permit is issued, making good common sense. However, it is also essential to ensure public health and safety. It provides safeguards against mistakes that could cost human life. This proposed building permit procedure process would provide a safeguard for human error and ensure that developers do not start construction or demolition without this assurance. Thank you for supporting the interests of the citizens of the city in sending an important message to its leadership by voting to override the mayor's veto. Secondly, I'm aware that prior to the passage of the USDO, people in the Buckingham neighborhood were concerned that New Scotland, near St. Peter's, would be developed as a canyon, thus running the extent neighborhood. To ensure passage of the USDO, the city entered into a restrictive covenant that would limit building heights to three stories and three and a half stories on South Allen. In December 2019, the common council voted overwhelmingly 11 to to require the city to honor that covenant. In keeping with that vote, I request that the council direct the mayor to enforce this covenant. And that concludes the comments submitted by Ms. Barbarian. Thank you. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
All right. Next up, we have a comment from Stephen Burke. Stephen Burke shares the following. Restrictive covenant, New Scotland Village, 563 New Scotland Avenue, Albany, New York. Request for the following comment to be read into the official record. The covenant reference was entered into in December of 2019, which limits the height of a set of proposed buildings to three or three and a half stories. The city entered into the clear, entered into the clear conditions and restriction of this covenant. It is legally binding to the developer, and it is the city's obligation to enforce the terms of this restriction. The residents of the city are entitled to the enforcement of the clear language of that was adopted in Resolution 912219R.
Thank you.
We still have additional comments, Mr. President?
Okay. Are they on the same topic or? That you can see?
I'm going through them right now. Bear with me one second. We have a comment from James Hennessy, which looks a little bit different from the others. How, how dare the city administration not enforce the covenant? The common council has a duty to ensure it overrides the veto and forces the mayor to obey the law. They might also, they might also be a problem later down the road when the mortgage lender realizes that the property is in violation of the restrictive covenant and refuses to issue a loan on the property. I find it outrageous that the city would permit this illegal use to go through, especially when future problems may be incurred. Why arrest people for carrying illegal firearms if you are not going to follow your own law that you swore to uphold? It's illegal. It can't be built. It's that easy. No one cares because money is changing hands, but the people who live here care, and they might just go for different candidates if this illegal use is permitted. The covenant says three stories. Actively permitting this obviously illegal project is immoral. All parties were on notice that it was illegal before it was proposed. Those who go forward with it should be recalled from government or possibly even investigated to see if there's any corruption causing the city to violate its own laws. What if they want to build the Empire State Building there, too? Never mind. You let them do it. There's another comment from Eric Copeland. He speaks in support of 158119 and urged that the council ensure full compliance of all local, state, and federal regulations before any permit. And he urges the common council to override the mayor, the mayor's veto concerning enforcement of the restricted covenant for the proposed project at 563 New Scotland Avenue. Paul Lamar shared his comments live.
All right. So now it sound like we got through them all.
Almost. We got Barry Copland's. Barry Copland's comments, he's asking the common council to override the mayor's veto so that we can be assured that major development projects meet safety requirements before ground is broken. 563 New Scotland, restrictive covenant to ensure passage of the USDO, the city entered into a restrictive covenant that would limit building heights to three stories and three and a half stories on South Allen in December 2019. He restates the vote 11 to 2 to require the city to honor that the covenant, please direct the mayor to enforce this covenant. Steve Roman is also writing regarding the restrictive covenant and the development near St. Peter's. As is Kathleen Roman. Pete Sheen spoke live. William Decker to the Albany Common Council regarding the proposals pertaining to 563 New Scotland Avenue. He's encouraging the council to override the mayor's veto of Tom Hoey ordinance. The common council must insist that the planning board enforce the requirements of all local, state, and federal regulations before groundbreaking begins. The common council must direct the mayor to enforce the three-story restrictive covenant. Brendan B provided his comments live. We have a comment from Maura McNulty, which reads as follows. My name is Maura McNulty, and I've lived happily in Albany for several decades. I'm grateful to the planning committee for voting in favor of councilmember Hoey's proposed amendments to the USDO Section 375. This is a good way to prevent costly problems and ensures that the USDO functions as the transparent document it was meant to be. The planning committee saw the logic of Mr. Hoey's ordinance, and I ask the full council override Mayor Sheen's veto. Thanks for your attention and for all your work on behalf of our city. Mary Ann Berman, I'm sorry, spoke. That's what I have so far for this evening.
Thank you so much. No one's in the queue. With that being said, we will close public comment period for this day. And now, moving on to our next part of our agenda, approval of minutes. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer the August 3 of 2020 meeting minutes for passing.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Approval of minutes passes. Moving on to considerations of local laws. Ms. Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I recognize local law K and ask for its introduction.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. Can a clerk please read the local law?
Local law men's in Section Three of Article One of Chapter three thirteen of Part Two of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to billing of the fee for curbside collection of waste.
Thank you. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. Refer to finance.
Thank you, sir. Continue on with approval, I mean, not approval, local laws. Ms. Love?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice local law L and ask for its introduction.
Thank you, Ms. Love. Mr. Can the clerk please read the local law?
A local law mentioning the Charter of the City of Albany in regard to residency requirements of common council members.
Thank you. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. Refer to council operation.
Thank you. Now, moving on, do we have any reports from any standing committees? Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, Public Safety will be meeting August thirty-first to take up Ms. Frederick's ordinance on surveillance tech fifteen eighty-one twenty and also to speak regarding or discuss reconvening the gun violence task force. Based on recent happenings, we might have to, you know, pull something together prior to that. But that's, right now, that's, that's the plan.
Thank you, Ms. Kimbrough. Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you. The General Services Committee meeting is meeting on August twenty-fourth to consider ordinances number thirteen seventy-two twenty and fourteen seventy-two twenty.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. There is no more, sorry, there are no reports of any standing committees. We'll move on to considerations of ordinances.
Mr. President, I would just note, I did mention this in our last meeting, but note that our finance committee meeting is still happening this Thursday.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Farrell. If no other committees to report, we will be moving on to now considerations of ordinances. Mr. Robinson?
Considerations of ordinances are resolutions.
I have you down as an ordinance sixteen eighty-two twenty. That's not you, Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, this is the property.
It's for, it's for the lot at one oh nine Third Street.
Okay, well, I ordered, I put on just a moment.
Just the introduction.
I thought when we received the agenda, we had Mr. Ballerin as introducing that.
Yeah.
We'll lose.
Oh.
Not in my district, but I got no.
It's not. It's, it's, it's definitely in the fifth order.
Yeah. Kelly, could you introduce that for me? I don't have.
Yes. Yes, sir. My apologies. On behalf of Mr. Robinson, I notice ordinance sixteen eighty-two twenty and ask for its introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance to the common council authorizing the sale to William Chapman of a city-owned vacant lot at one oh nine Third Street.
Thank you. Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. It will be your referral to finance.
Thank you. Mr. Kimbrough, the rating ordinances?
Are held. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Kimbrough. Now, moving on to considerations of resolutions, Mr. Robinson?
I'm sorry, my iPad blacked out. I'm sorry. Could you introduce that one as well, Kelly? I'm sorry. And I said, thank you.
Okay, yes, I noticed Resolution seventy-four eighty-two twenty R and asked for its passage.
Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council reappointing Natasha Alexander as a member of the Commission on Human Rights.
Do you have discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can the clerk call the roll?
Anani?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Ballerin?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Conti?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Dosette?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Farrell?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Flynn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Hoey?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Igo?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Kimbrough?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Love?
Yes, co-sponsor.
O'Brien?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Yes.
Fourteen in the affirmative.
Thank you. Resolution passes. Continuing on, consideration resolution, Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution seventy-five eighty-two twenty R and ask for its intro and hold.
Thank you, sir. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Yes, Mr. President. A resolution of the common council adopting the local government retention schedule, L G S dash one.
Thank you, and that resolution will be held. Moving on to resolutions held, Mr. Anani?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution forty-nine sixty-one twenty R and ask for its passage on a roll call thereon.
Thank you, Mr. Anani. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution calling on the federal government to implement a program to forgive student loans for all current borrowers and implement a program to ensure that all students can attend accredited public colleges and universities at no charge.
Is there any discussion on the resolution, Mr. Anani?
Thank you, Mr. President. Right now, America is facing a crisis with record unemployment, food insecurity on the rise, and overall uncertainty as to how so many people would need to pay their rent. The last thing people need to focus on is how to pay off their student loans, which is why I'm calling on the federal government to forgive student debt as a necessary measure to grow our economy and to provide real relief to so many Americans who need it. The average student loan borrower has over thirty-three thousand dollars in student debt, with the average student loan payment being three hundred and ninety-three dollars a month, which represents a substantial financial burden that prevents millions of Americans from affording housing, transportation, childcare, and other important expenses. The continuing growth of this debt, if left unchecked, will be a long-term barrier of economic advancement for current and future generations. Now, there are some people who might say, we can't afford to take this action. But let's put this request in context. The cost of forgiving all current student debt is estimated to be one point seven trillion dollars. It's less than the cost of two thousand and seventeen tax cuts and jobs act, which economists have stated as having a minimal impact on the economy and substantially less than the cost of the CARES Act that was recently signed into law. Now, in the wake of unprecedented economic challenges, forgiving student debt will be a relatively affordable means to promote long-term relief from this unprecedented economic crisis. Mr. President, let's imagine what it would mean for our economy if forty-five million Americans suddenly had an average or an additional three hundred and ninety-three dollars in their pocket to spend. The choice is clear, and as a college town, which Albany is, Albany has a lot at stake on this issue. So I encourage everyone to support this resolution, to call on the federal government to forgive student debt. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Anani?
Yes.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Mr. Conti? Is he on?
He's, he's still there. He's just away from the computer.
Maybe he's frozen.
Circle back to him.
Dosette?
Yes.
Yes.
Frederick? Flynn?
Yes.
Hoey?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Conti? Mr. President, that's thirteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Continuing on, resolutions held, Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you. I noticed Resolution sixty-two seventy-one twenty and ask for its passage.
As amended. Thank you, Mr. Thank you, sir. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council regarding potential brownfield sites.
Is there a discussion on the resolution, Mr. O'Brien?
Just very briefly, this arose out of my concern over a particular site on Covenant Avenue. But it's quite apparent that there are more than one sites identified in Albany as potential brownfield sites. And I think that the planning department needs to take a look at how it's going to responsibly deal with that when developers come to develop all or parts of those sites. And it asks the planning board, the planning department, to propose language to the U S D O to accomplish that and to take a hard look at this project on Covenant Avenue, which is the one that's of particular concern to me. So I ask for everybody's support. It has passed out satisfactorily with a positive recommendation out of the council's planning committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Ballerin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank Mr. Councilman O'Brien for expanding resolutions so that it looks at the entire city when it comes to these issues. I think we should take very serious pause when we see potential development in areas that have been classified as brownstone. And we should do proper due diligence to make sure all communities, all neighborhoods, all developments are done in a way that's safe for everybody, nobody who would be living there, no matter what community or what area of the city is. So I am very appreciative for Councilman O'Brien's adding that to the resolution. I know that he's focused on one specific area in his ward, but by expanding this, it really lets the planning board know that we want to make sure this type of due diligence is done for all of our communities when there's potential brownstone, not just some. So, thank you again.
Just for the record, brownfield, Mr. Ballerin, but that's good.
My.
No problem. It happens. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Conti? Dosette? Farrell?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Hoey?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Igo?
Yes. Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
She's muted, but she did say yes.
Okay.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
That's fourteen in the affirmative.
Yes, Mr. Kimbrough?
Yeah, can I be added as a co-sponsor?
Thank you. Fourteen affirmative, resolution passes. Continue on the resolutions held, Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of planning, the planning committee, I noticed Resolution sixty-nine seventy-two twenty R and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council reappointing Andre Lake as a member of the Sustainability Advisory Committee.
Is this ask for passage tonight, Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Thank you. Any discussion on the resolution? Ms. Duchesne?
So, I'm unmuted, okay.
Yes.
So, just for everyone's benefit and for the benefit of the public, I just want to note that these were discussed in, these three appointments were discussed in the planning committee. And two of them were passed out with a favorable, all three of them were passed out with a favorable recommendation. We did need to have Mr. Sheehan come in for caucus very briefly to comply with our procedural requirements. So I just, for background, I just want to make sure everybody knows that these were passed out with a favorable recommendation unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Duchesne. Seeing no further discussion, can a clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
Ballerin? Dosette?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Farrell?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Hoey?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Councilmember Love responded in the affirmative. O'Brien?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thirteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes, Mr. Kimbrough? We can't hear you. You're muted.
Okay, I noticed, thank you, Mr. President. I noticed Resolution seventy, seventy-two twenty R and ask for its passage.
Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council reappointing Peter Sheehan as a member of the Sustainability Advisory Committee.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Dochet?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Farrell? Flynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Johnson? Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love? She responded in the affirmative. O'Brien?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thirteen in the affirmative, Mr. President.
Resolution passes, Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed resolution seventy-one seventy-two twenty R and asked for its passage.
Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Danielle, you're muted.
Resolution of the common council, reappointing Tina Lieberman as a member of the Sustainability Advisory Committee.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll? Do I hear somebody?
Yes, co-sponsor please, Tina's great.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Dochet?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Farrell?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thirteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Mr. Kimbrough?
Resolution held.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And that brings us to miscellaneous part of a meeting. Any members would like to speak? We got Ms. Fredericks?
Thank you. I did just want to comment on the shooting that took place at Southern Boulevard today, right near my home. Today's shooting did take the life of a seventeen-year-old and also sustained injuries to a twenty-five-year-old, but not life-threatening. Couple points here, so this occurred right in broad daylight, and another youth who was not even of legal age to vote yet lost his life due to the gun violence that has plagued our city. The other point here is that these two were driving from a funeral, mourning the loss of a loved one that recently lost their life to the gun violence. They didn't even have the chance to fully mourn the loss before losing another life. So, I did ask the chief if he could start looking into when these funerals would occur, seeing how these perpetrators are really ruthless, and they see as opportunity to get people, to have people out in the open and take, take action. So he's going to look into that, and as well, I do think we need to push up the public safety meeting, Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fredericks. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can, can everyone hear me? Because the audio's been kind of terrible tonight. So, I would like to say, I don't understand when, and how, when the people speak, they don't get what they want. For the, for almost eight years, the true needs of the city have been ignored by this administration. Anytime that I have attempted to share my concerns, they have been immediately shot down or met with an excuse that has been given without an investigation. This type of attitude has created a miserable work environment for many people and is carrying over to the residents of, of the city. I would like to say thank you to Vincent Ragusel and the other speaker who spoke up. Unfortunately, it's going to take people from the upper wards to get this administration to show leadership and not to lean on a community who you have been doing denying services that are needed. We are in a serious time, and we need to put the focus on what is really going on in our city. Gun violence is changing our people daily. I know personally how it can make your vision blurry. We need to have real conversations about our people healing, because when the people are healed, then the city will follow. It is awful, it's often said that basketball is not the answer. My response is that doing nothing has never been the answer. Thank you, Mr. President.
Record, that was talked to today, we, those who didn't know or wasn't on, we, the caucus, we did have the chief in. Many council members did question the chief on deployment. How is the chief using state troopers who were involved? Put in, how the chief is using the sheriffs who were deployed in our city. The chief gave his answer. And so, the gun violence that plagues our city, our council members will continue to do their part with the Public Safety Committee and looking at reenacting the Gun Violence Task Force. But we, we, we understand, when the chief came in front of us, for those who didn't know, he did give us statistics and stats, but we told the chief that if people don't feel safe, stats aren't going to matter. And we're at a point, I know personally, and I know many other council members feel the same way, their constituents don't feel safe. They do not feel like we have this under control. So our council members will continue to do their part. And our job is to support efforts to end this gun violence. But we also need a plan on how to do that, and our council members will be looking at what we can do. But we do need a broader law enforcement plan, and we do need to make sure that whatever we take forward, that we support our law enforcement officers, give them needed tools to make sure they can do their job properly, and also support those community members who are trying to also end this gun violence throughout our city. So, that being said, that's, I just wanted to get that for the record, for those who were listening, who weren't able to attend our caucus, that our council members did request that the chief come and speak to us. Mr. Kimbrough?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So I will be calling for an emergency public safety meeting. The thing is, us, we as city officials, we can't do it alone. The police department can't do it alone, it's going to take the community also. I know some, some folks have a problem with asking the community to kind of weigh in and help out in times like this, but that, police ain't, they're not around twenty-four-seven. People don't, you know, you can put a cop on every corner and people get shot in the middle of the block. It, it, it doesn't work like that. We, we have to change the way law enforcement works, the way we think about this, and the way our folks think about each other. It really, it, it, there's no one single solution, but I'm willing to, and I don't have all the answers, but it, it's going to take all of us. This isn't, this isn't just about the police. This is about how we think about each other and think about life. So I'll be calling for that meeting, and I, I hope to see all of you there participating, because we're, we're in trouble. I mean, we, we have kids killing kids, and it, it really, it's disturbing. And I have these conversations with, with people throughout the week about, they don't want their kids to leave the house, leave away from the house, they don't want them even out of the house for fear of being victimized. So, we, we'll come together and, and have our, our discussion and try to come up with, with some solutions to the, to the violence. But it's, it's going to take all of us. It will absolutely take all of us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr.?
I'm sorry, I was in the hospital for that, the caucus meeting. One of the questions I would have loved to have asked is, where are these guns coming from? I, I own a pistol permit, and it was, it took me over a year to get it. So, you know, these are legal guns, obviously, but do we have any idea where they're coming from? Is there any type, you know, if it's interstate, can we get FBI to help us out? You know, these were, that would have been the question I would have asked.
Thank you, and I think that is one of the thing, objectives of the Gun Violence Task Force as well, is to pose those questions and, and get those answers as well.
Right. Sorry, just real quick, and if I remember correctly, a, a member asked about the, the source of the guns, and we, we assumed from down south somewhere, but I believe the chief said it was from within the state, like relatives, people, you know, so it, it's, it's, it's local and within New York State is where most of the guns involved in these incidents have come from.
That they've, that they've been able to confiscate? Yes, he did.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I want to piggyback on what Councilmember Johnson said. I remember many years ago when I worked for NAPR, we used to run some of youth programs at night, night basketball, and we'd get sometimes criticized about, you know, basketball isn't going to save, change these kids' lives. And I took that criticism with a grain of salt, because it's not going to change their lives, but it may save their life for that one night. And it may save their life for what they're doing that, that week. And what we're seeing, in my view, is a comprehensive dilemma of when you defund all of our programs and when you have to cut your budget by ten percent. I mean, that's what we're seeing. And it's critical that we let our federal lawmakers know that this is what happens when you don't support local governments, when you don't support and fund local entities. These are the programs that get cut. These are the initiatives to take a hit. You know, we had to cut our summer youth program by more than half. Would that have affected us? You know what? Maybe only one or two. That's one or two more than what we have now. It's a combination of having programs that are short-term, that help people get through day in, in and day out, having programs that affect long-term growth, long-term development, long-term advancement, and having programs to deal with, with the growth and development of communities as well, as well as interpersonal growth. So, if there is no one simple answer, there is no one simple solution. What we have to look at is see how can we get back the funding so that we can get these programs back up and running, so we can get, you know, our law enforcement in a strong position again, so we can get our community feeling that we are reinvesting in the community so that they feel that they have a investment as well to make sure everybody is safe. But no, I don't think we can point the finger at the community. I don't think we can, there's no, there's no one entity that I think we can, you know, we, we, I think it has to be all of us. And we all have to take the responsibility, that it is all of us that have to find ways to get through this and use every resource we have to change the situation. And I wish I had a simple solution, I wish I could simply say, "This is what we need to do," but I believe it's more comprehensive than just one, one initiative. It needs to be a combination of bringing a lot of it back and getting the funding, getting the funding that's needed to actually bring it back.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to piggyback off of something that you said and mentioned about the caucus meeting that we had with the chief and an issue that I brought up, which was the give funding, which is the amount that is allocated to the APDs for violence intervention. And there's something that the chief said that I took issue with that night, and he said that most of the give funding at this point in time is going towards overtime for police officers to combat the violence that is going on in the city. However, with that same give program, that program has an anti-violence coordinator to prevent, you know, to mitigate the issues of violence in our city so that police overtime would not be, and would have not, we have to be utilized by this grant. And so, you know, our thing that we discussed in caucus the other day, and I brought up, is that we need more strong oversight off of what this anti-violence coordinator is producing and what are the programs that are coming out of this particular grant, and how are we measuring the effectiveness of the programs that are administered by this grant? So hopefully, with the emergency public safety meeting, we can get this information from the police chief, and so we can have a better understanding about how these resources are being utilized for our communities.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. That's all, Mr. Kimbrough. Do we have a? Motion to adjourn?
Okay, everyone, focus. Okay, if no one has anything further, motion to adjourn.
Is there a second motion? Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Needing adjourned.
Aye, everybody.